I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. March 18th, 2024, the Town of Papi Planning Board. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Legions. The Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America. Into the public. Justice, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm the Chair of Planning Board, Sue Smith. And our Board members to my far right, John Shaheen and Carson. Our Board Secretary, Sarah LeJudas. My left, Deb Bargabas, Deb Cook, and Will Prizzi. Our Town Engineer, John Dunkle. And our Town Attorney for Planning Board, Amelia Akonadu. My claimant, Robert. Looking at the draft minutes from last month's meeting, were there any corrections? Or if it's good to go, motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion. My John, is there a second?
Second.
Kevin, Kevin, so in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, minutes are approved. First of all, I would like to thank Kevin for sharing in my absence the last two months. I appreciate it very much. And with that, first on our agenda tonight is the McCaffrey subdivision. It's a public hearing on an application for a subdivision of a 55.78 acre parcel into two proposed parcels on Ridge Road in Palm Springs. The tax max number is 026 dash 01 dash 12 dot 1. So Representative, come on up.
Look around, I can see it. Good, so I'm Kevin McCaffrey. Here last month, kind of an overview, I'm going to basically go through that same discussion again, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. If you have dates, any questions you have. So it's just an aerial view of property, has the existing property lines on it. So road frontage is here, 500 feet total. It's this way here. This area here, so all these woods are included too. As I mentioned last time, there's a semi pond that the beavers moved into. And you can see they've got some immediate dams here and in fact, it's wetting up into that old draw there. So when we initially, this used to be a 90 acre parcel. Here, up. So we subdivided these two. At the request of the Planning Board, and by the direction, we had an easement. So that the owner of this parcel didn't have to cross the wetlands or the pond. They had a clear legitimate route to get back there. It's a long side of the farm field, which makes this a crossing here through that draw to get up on hill. This is quite a bit higher elevation, sits up on there. So again, this is just the existing survey. And we think that easement, so if there's clear on where that is, there's a 60 foot corridor. For the connection to Ridge Road, this parcel, and then they have a 50 foot wide easement. So I sent you an updated plan, but I'm going to ask you to disregard. Got a new one today, with updates on those sightline distances, everything else is the same. There's a discrepancy where they took those shots, so they had to redo those numbers. So this is the proposed subdivision plan. Proposal is to pull out about three and a half acres here. And remainder, about 52 acres, 200 feet of frontage here. This area does have an existing well that went down around 2012. Sat there, and last year I got a pump in there and just started running water out of it, make sure everything was good. And there's an existing driveway that I put in in '22. So I went through the county DOT process to get that all approved and signed off on their permit. This shows a proposed access route approximately 20 feet off that new property line, so 20 feet to the north. And surveyor, he's telling me he's got 795 acres right lines to the north, 857 to the south. So I'm in the process with DOT, looking through their approval, but as far as I know, those numbers are sufficient for what they need to see. Those are the highlights. We talked last time about the existing farm access. Does cut prospect owner of this lot. And with the subdivision of these two, that would get shifted most likely to this new proposed access. So that's the summary. Just open up for questions for Kevin.
I know a lot of questions came around on the 50 foot access there at the back reason. Cuts across, based on your last statement, the existing farm lane, you said is going to be through lot 3A dash 1. That you're going to do away with that and move it over?
Correct. Yeah. If these two parcels are owned by different individuals. This would be legitimate room on paper. If these two parcels are owned by the same individual, I guess is that they would probably come in here, the new farm access. This is all till now.
So that's dry enough to put a new driveway in?
Here?
Yeah, where the second driveway would be.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine. I mean, there's a ditch line, they need a cover, but that's it.
But to go through the field, it's dry enough to get access to the back?
It's a little wet in this corner.
I'm going to play devil's advocate a little bit, and that, if that's going to be, that farm lane is going to be moved off of 3A dash 1 anyway. The, if the farm, if it's two different people, okay, lot 2A to actually get there in terms of agriculturally, you're going to be traveling through lot 3A dash 2. Is there going to be an easement for access then?
Yeah, that was the intent with putting this little spur in here. So that easement's going to stay right where it is, same definition and coordinates. And be maintained just how it was, go with this parcel.
Okay, so here's my question, if you're moving that farm lane over anyway. And you're going to have an easement. I guess I'm just trying to get rid of that little strip, if you're going to have an easement anyway, just move the farm lane over. It'll go from the road through 3A dash 2. And, and you still have the easement to access. Will, do you understand what I'm saying?
I had kind of spoken last meeting to try to keep it this way. But after looking at it more, it probably wouldn't be the end of the world, would do. I'd advocated to keep this so that. You know, that 3A strip to the south of lot A1, that strip that we currently own, that 60 foot. Just so that we would be able to keep that, rather than having to develop a new driveway on the north side of 3A1. But.
Do you currently have an existing driveway across through there?
Halfway, uh, yeah. I mean, not according to that map, but.
You use the path that's dotted in here right now?
Yeah, but I would say part that is on ours, in this beginning half, but. It would probably take as much or more to develop this as it would this, which is different than what I had said last meeting, so. Yeah.
Does this sound to understand what I'm trying to say?
I'm not sure if I follow your question.
We're going to get rid of, I mean, we're talking about getting rid of that strip.
Right, if he's going to move.
Well, this easement needs to stay here, because we need to have a direct connection to this board.
And the advantage of doing it the way he's proposing is that then you don't have three different property owners involved in the easement.
That's correct, this small lot would be totally free of any rights away.
Right, and the lot that you're creating, they would have no interest in keeping that easement usable. So it could potentially create a problem for the other two parcels who do have an interest in keeping that open so that they can farm it.
So I guess my point back to your original questions. These are owned by the same individual. And if there are preferences to come in here, they have every right to. But what I'm saying is, I need to keep this connection to that 60 foot wide corridor to provide a continuous route back here.
I mean, I don't see a problem with it as long as we're clear in the meeting minutes why we're doing it, because. We talked about it, as we talked about in the last meeting, we try to avoid little strips like that. But for me, as long as it's clear in the meeting minutes why, it makes sense to do it that way, I'm fine with it.
Other than that, the only difference, what I'm looking at versus what you said, is that the site distance is.
Yeah, so the updated, the updated plan that you have, and this new one that I'll send, we added the well, it was surveyed. There was a radius on there. He surveyed that existing driveway entrance, to get that located. And then he's showing a proposed drive, but there's nothing in the field there, that's, that's just on paper. And then the site distances. So there's no change to any of the parcel boundaries or any of that.
What I'm looking at, it's got the well, it's got the actual drive, and the polls, no difference on the distances?
State those again, if you want, it was 795 to the north and 857, so.
John, since you're leaving early, anything you want to say about it, you're good?
I've gone through the AF, the accurate, the wetlands on the property, obviously no archaeological, but this is just a subdivision, so. Severe environmental impacts.
We should make a contingent upon receiving site distance.
Confirmation that DOT, that there is a place to put a driveway on.
And he's got more than half of it, we'll just have to have it in Florida.
Correct. Yeah, the numbers, if the numbers are correct.
For 610.
It's 55.
The usual language about this not being a building lot and.
It's the only thing, as I'm looking at this map, trying to distinguish, make sure he puts a revised date on it so we know we have the most current.
Yeah, I'm not sure where it'll be. Sorry, you got this all version two.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Well. I need some breadcrumbs.
Yes, yep.
And I could send hard copies.
And we talked last time too about negative easement, is this still applicable?
I had been somewhat concerned because, so if they end up being two separate landowners on 3A to, and 2A. We would have to develop like along the back of the new lot. On land that we don't own, I wasn't sure what right was, or what would need to be.
Did you say this?
We got it once, but we started through. Yeah, that's a head, I sort of throw that. Yeah, where, where are you, where are you looking at? In that flag, behind, on the back of yours, yep.
Yeah, there.
Just to have language so that we would be able to develop that if we did not own the new north side.
Yeah, I mean, I went back and looked at the existing deed, and it expressly identified Michael McCaffrey at the time, but, you know, or its successors or signs.
Can maintain easement, or whatever, is that what the language is?
It just says a right of way for ingress and egress.
Yeah, so I, I don't know what.
Is it a given, you can fix the right of way? If you have, if you're a party to the right of way, that you can.
Improve it?
Improve it?
Depends on what the language is in the deed.
Well, you said the language is just that it's a right of way?
Say so once or sure, you've got to be able to read it and we can determine.
Yeah, because it depends what you want to do with it, like some don't allow you to, you know, put a driveway or anything.
Right, right.
Run permable over it or that kind of thing, so it just depends.
Before describing property, subject to a 50 foot right of way for ingress and egress to Michael S. McCaffrey, his heirs, successors and signs. That's more particularly bounded, described as follows, and then it goes through the coordinates that are on the map.
Yeah, so that's just a right of way that wouldn't give the person benefiting from it a right to adapt.
Where it's, I had to grow a couple of trees that would not include ingress and egress.
If it's obstructing your right of way, then the property owner would have to move the trees if it's obstructing right of way.
So is there a clarification that needs to be made, or?
Well, just last time in the discussion, we, it wasn't determined where the easement was going to be. But if it's clear on the maps where the easement's going to be, and that's in the language that gets reported.
I'd like to just clarify one thing. This is an easement or right of way? That's.
Just part of it, yeah.
This is.
It is.
That sits just on the west side of that tree line.
Okay.
Didn't you say last month that that driveway that you were just pointing to, it did get access to 2A until the beavers flooded that?
Yeah, when I, when I was a kid, there was existing access here. And at some point in the 90s, this kind of got let go, and then they just stayed on that side in the ag field.
Okay. Because of the beaver damage.
Because they couldn't keep going straight up through to that.
Yeah, it would fit with the timing.
Okay.
It was early 90s, and then that's, you know, everything around there just got eaten worse.
Clarification for me, when you introduced all this, you said manmade, and then you talked about the beavers, did, is it? I understand the wetlands and so on, but when that flooded, was there already like a pond?
Yeah, so Carpenter Creek comes down here. Goes down, there's culvert in that farm row right there, and then that's what fills the pond, and then it leaves on this side, goes south. You can see the remnants of a square there. I don't know when it was dug, 70s, really sure. But it was just a little square here. And just to have an overflow, not even really a dam, just was turned back into the creek there, so they may, they moved in on that hour.
Going back in our minutes on last month. John confirmed language regarding improvements would need to be included in the easement. Agreements would need to be made relative to who is going to maintain the easement. And mainly confirm that the language for the proposed easement should be submitted to the board as part of the application. As the easement discussed would be a requirement for the subdivision. Load would have to be contained in the described easement as it is the only legal access to the property. So in our motion, do we refer to that?
Yeah, considering on receipt of the remaining things, we need a letter from the DOT, and then just.
Language describing the right of way?
Correct, yeah.
From my attorney.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments on the board? This has been advertised for a public hearing. When we enter into the public hearing, we have enough information to review and go through the seeker process. Seeker is a series of 11 questions, and they can be answered with either no or small impact made per. Or the other answer would be a moderate to large impact made per. Again, based on information that we've received from applicant and review from our town engineer, questions that may have been asked. So question number one, will the proposed action recreate a material conflict with the adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Like with no or small impact?
Agreed.
Number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land? Pretty simple two lot subdivision, I say no or small impact.
Agreed.
Yep.
Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Again, two lot subdivision and community, I say no or small impact.
Agreed.
Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No or small impact.
Agreed, yep.
Number five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? No rural, agricultural, I say no, small impact.
Agreed, yep.
Will proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Again, no or small impact. Will proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? And also public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No or small impact on both?
Three, please.
Number eight, will proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? Again, no or small impact. Number nine, will proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, floor or fauna? No or small impact, that we've tried to stay away and not disrupt the wetlands. Number 10, will proposed action result in increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? Again, it's a simple two lot subdivision, no or small impact.
Agreed.
And number 11, will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Simple two lot subdivision, no or small impact.
Agreed.
Based on these findings, I'm making a motion for a negative declaration.
I'll second the motion.
Kevin has likened any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion is carried for a negative stack. At this point, I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second the motion.
For subdivisions. Any discussion with that, all favor to open?
Aye.
Opposed? So public hearing is now open on McCaffrey subdivision, is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this subdivision? Any questions? Hearing none?
I make a motion, close the public hearing.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Heard good comments, questions from the board, otherwise do we have a motion?
I've got a question. The, because I can't really tell from the location map on this reduced copy, but is this north of number four row?
Just north, yep.
Okay.
Okay. You can see that hill, can't quite see the crossroads, but you can see that hill there from the street.
So if we vote, I was going to accuse myself.
Requiem or abstain, which? You have a motion, one or another?
I'm making a motion, can I borrow that big map so I can look at it? Is that the most recent, we know, the one?
The survey?
The survey, yeah, yeah. What's that? Yeah, this is too small.
No, I don't know, you guys read most things.
So. What's the date on this map?
Oh, just stand.
310, 24.
Yeah.
Okay, now.
Well, there'll be adjustments in another map, but it's going to be based on what we have here. So I make a motion, we approve the subdivision. McCafferty subdivision. Based on a map dated 310 of 2024. Part of lots 66 and 67, Town of Papi. And tax map number 026.0 dash 01 dash 12 dot 1. And the approval is based on some changes to the map, including correction on the site distances of the proposed driveway. An updated deed on the new map. And a description of the right of way. The easement. How do I identify that easement? How do I identify that easement? We calling that like a finger, a lag, just so I understand where that easement is. You guess that's the end of the property, right, is that?
Yeah, I mean.
The fifty, the fifty feet.
The fifty foot easement on the east side of the property.
Of three A.
Three A dash.
Three, yeah, lot three A dash one, it's fifty feet by three hundred and eight point zero five feet. The language in the easement includes who maintains it and what type of maintenance is required. Amelia, should I add into that? They were talking about that easement, did he have the right to make improvements?
Outside of the scope of the planning board, like if the future purchaser, purchaser wants to discuss that in the easement, then they can do that at that time.
At that time, okay.
Yeah, but for our purposes, it's just that we have an easement in record so that there's not a landlub person.
All right, I think I've covered everything there.
Non-buildable lot.
Oh, yes, and it's, uh, at this time is a non-buildable lot.
That statement should be on the map.
That would get released by the process.
When do you go for building?
Right. I'll second the motion. Thank you very much.
So I'm asking Sarah to read back.
Approval is based on some changes to the map, including correction on the site distances of the proposed driveway and updated date on the new map and a description of the fifty foot easement on the east side of the property of lot three A dash one. Language in the easement must include who maintains it and what type of maintenance is required. Language noting that parcel is a non-buildable lot needs to be included as well.
It should say to the east of three A one, not on three A one, that easement is not included on three A one.
Fifty foot easement. East of.
Yeah, it's east of three A dash one.
Part of three A.
Part of three A dash two.
And D O T letter.
Acceptable.
Okay, okay, wait, so we had, already had the second on that, so we should actually have a motion revise that then?
We have a second.
John seconded before she read of that.
Yeah, so we should, yeah, we do have to based on, because it's been revised since she.
So the driveway needs approval of D O T.
Make a motion to revise it by adding the statement.
I second the motion to revise.
Revision is the D O T letter for driving confirmation.
Well, we got to vote on the revising, so I seconded it.
Okay.
You got to say all in favor.
But we got to make sure we have the statement so we know we voted.
Well, we're first voting on allowing us to revise the motion, then we vote on.
All in favor of making a revision?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, okay.
I make a motion. I make a motion to revise, motion to include in order from the D O T for the proposed driveway.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion and second for the re. This is for the whole thing.
For the whole thing with all of the details, yeah. Proper subdivision contingent on.
Right.
Okay, any further discussion? We got everything all nice and tight? Okay. Let's go individual on this one because of what Will had said, John?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
So it was a aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I'd like to refuse myself from voting based on personal interest in the project.
And nobody is, proposed motion carries for the subdivision with the petition.
My only question is on the follow-up info, should I plan to come back to the next meeting or can I just spit those things?
You submit, you don't need us for that.
Work through Tim, that's your main point. Thank you very much.
Let me know if any questions.
Okay, our attorney has another, has a conflict with the D O T.
Engineer.
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 Yes, engineer, okay. Attorney is standing. Okay, with that, next on our agenda. Certification subdivision, preliminary review of an application for subdivision land located thirty one sixty one Bush Road, Jansel, New York. Tax map number zero one eight dot dash zero two dash zero eight dot one. If, come on out, state your name and then tell us what you want to do.
Uh, my name is Nicholas Curtis. Um, I just wanted to make a correction on that. Um, the thirty one sixty one is my personal residence. The property that's getting subdivided is just down the road, it doesn't actually have a physical address to it. So I just wanted to.
We're going to just use the tax map number?
Yeah, it's just the tax map number.
So you land located on Bush Road, tax map.
Yeah, so it's just a, a simple two lot subdivision, just breaking off a small two acre basically rectangle lot. On the east side, on the east property line. Eventually sometime down the road to build a single family house on that two acre lot.
It's just the time we ask about site distance. So is there site distance for lot one? Oh, when you plan on putting in a driveway, do you have site distance?
I have not got that far yet, I didn't look into that.
Was there a hill or a nowhere or anything that would block?
There is a hill, it's, it's further this way towards the lot two, the corner of lot two. It kind of breaks like right here, uh, but there's, there's driveways on this side of the road all up and down there, so. I never really gave it much thought because there is a lot of, you know.
Okay. Instead of fifty five mile an hour road?
It's forty.
Forty, okay, that helps you a lot.
Yeah.
So you really wouldn't, for the subdivision, you wouldn't need the site distance until you decided to build and put driveway in, so you probably would want to know it.
Right, give them some forethought on.
Right, so you don't get turned down.
Right, yes, that's why I was bringing it up, thank you. Didn't want it to get turned down after the subdivision.
Yeah.
Does an existing driveway override that?
Yeah, there is an existing driveway actually in lot one. If he changes it to a house or something, then you need it.
Is that just like a farm access driveway?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you probably would still need some of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just because there's driveways there, it doesn't automatically mean you would get it, be entitled to one.
Okay.
I mean, chances are you would be, but you would want to definitely check that files.
Right.
Lot two? Yeah, I don't see.
It's town road, I think.
Which road? Which road's town, correct? Have you been by there, Tim, at all?
A couple times.
Commons?
No, he should be able to have site distance.
Because on a forty mile an hour road, everybody goes forty miles an hour.
Oh, yes.
The tractors maybe, yeah.
Yep.
So what's the reason on the back side, Howard?
So, um, the reasoning for that is it kind of follows the contour, the lay of the land. But I want to be sure that the farmer has access to come in on the back side of that property so we can farm the other side of lot two on the field there. Because there's a, there's a hedgerow that comes through there with a power line. So I just wanted to make sure that there was enough room so they could get through with farm equipment there.
To get to the west of lot one?
To the west, yeah, and the remainder of the field on the back lot.
Okay. Any questions? If you come here looking at the map, so, okay, you want to subdivide off lot one, working lot two. At the top, there's another reference to a lot one. Different?
Yeah, that, that, uh, that was, that's actually part of the same family. I'm not sure why that's on there, honestly. That was probably part of the original subdivision from the original family. Um, and then.
But that is a different, totally different.
That's a totally different, yeah, that's a totally different person parcel.
I would say take that one.
Yeah, we take that one right off. Okay.
Avoid that confusion.
Yeah. I didn't even notice that, it's so small on this one.
Questions, comments from?
Are there any wetlands or on any property?
That small lot number one, is that owned by a different person?
That would be, continue to be owned by me, eventually in the future.
Okay, tomorrow's just going to suggest that the other person, me, have that somebody else's lot.
Okay.
Just to make it more clear.
Okay.
But that's, just take it off if it's all the same name.
Yep.
Be pretty simple, so. Schedule a public hearing for next month? Okay, there's a letter that you'll have to send out. With the serums, public, listed, and we say you have to sign. And we will need their confirmation that if there was mail, that it was mailed to you. That's it?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, other than that, just a more common one for the people that did go to the county planning symposium. Thanks for your time, I thought it was a good day. Carl and John, if something you're going to do online training this year?
Yeah, I could send my.
So always a reminder that those who want, make sure Nikki gets your statement that you want to sign on. Now, do you have anything? Tim, you got any?
Yeah.
Okay, make a motion to adjourn tonight?
Second the motion.
Anybody opposed? All in favor? Forty five minutes, okay.